We're calling meeting to order. Mr. Chairman Fisher, please leave us an invocation, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for this day and for our many blessings. We ask for your blessing and comfort for those suffering from natural disasters, especially the recent fires in California. We pray for first responders, fire and rescue staff, law enforcement personnel, and members of our armed services. Father, I ask that you watch over this board in the coming New Year as they face the many challenges for our community. Be with us this evening in our work and decisions on the behalf of our citizens. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Special officer, please leave us a fledge, please, sir.
Would you stand in the face of the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with never be in touching or sorrow.
Option of the agenda, are there any proposed changes?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Agreed. Entertaining motion, adopt the agenda is presented.
So move.
Motion in second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Adopt the agenda is presented. Consent agenda, tentative agendas, items, any proposed changes?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Tentative agenda items for consent are tabs A, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, and Q.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Motion to approve is our second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Consent agenda is adopted. This is a portion of the meeting, set aside for citizen comment on any issue that's on the agenda but not subject to public hearing. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share?
We had no one sign up, Mr. Chairman.
No one?
No one.
Thank you, sir. What are supervisors' comments, are there any? Seeing none, move on. Supervisor Fisher, would you help me with the Employee of the Month? Tricia Clevenger, would you come join us, please? So the Employee of the Month Award Program recognizes the county's employees as an important and valuable resource. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, it's my pleasure to present Tricia D. Clevenger for consideration as Employee of the Month for December 2017. Tricia serves as a correctional officer two with the Northwestern Regional Adult Detention Center. On Saturday, September 29, 2017, Officer Clevenger was working main control by herself, which is a demanding post, but she took extra time from her regular duties to monitor other officer who was working the special management unit at the time. Officer Clevenger does this regularly to ensure the officer's safety and security of the facility. Officer Clevenger observed inmate housed in the unit becoming belligerent and proceed to assault the officer. Officer Clevenger controlled her emotions in this highly stressful situation and promptly called for assistance. Officer Clevenger then, keeping a visual on the officer, opened all necessary doors to get available staff in to assist with the incident. Due to Officer Clevenger's diligence, the assaulted officer received only minor injuries, even with the severity of the incident. Now entertain a motion to approve Tricia D. Clevenger as Employee of the Month for December 2017.
So move.
Motion in a second.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Tricia D. Clevenger is hereby recognized as the Frederick County Employee of the Month for December 2017. The Board of Supervisors extends its gratitude to Tricia for her outstanding performance, dedicated service, and wishes her continued success in future endeavors. Well done. Congratulations. Thank you. Resources Advisory Board. We're going to leave that one for our new supervisor to work on. Community Management Team?
We have a candidate that is being interviewed by the CPMT, and hopefully we'll have a recommendation in January.
Thank you, sir. Lord Fairfax Community College Representative. Did it include a name?
No. No, sir. We're looking for someone to fill that spot.
Okay, so we are looking for someone to serve on the Lord Fairfax Community College Economic Development Authority? Think we had a couple.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I wondered if everyone got the sheet that I sent out about a prospective member for the EDA, and unless there's some opposition, I would make a motion to appoint Mr. Brian Fairbanks to the Economic Development Authority.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
The second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, sir. This moved on me. Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee, how are we?
Yes, sir, I've put this off for a while, few things I need to do yet, but I would like to make a motion to approve Mary Ann Viviano and Hugh B. Van Meter as reappointments to the Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee.
All right, we've heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Aye.
One, no? So Van Meter and Ms. Baviano are appointed to the Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee. Is there one more vacancy? Or does that fill?
For?
For the advisory committee.
No, that was both of them.
Okay. I didn't know whether there were two or three.
Yes.
All right, so Frederick County Planning Commission, Gary Oats from Stonewall District.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve Gary R. Oats for the Stonewall District Representative to the Planning Commission.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Gary Oats is reappointed to Planning Commission as Stonewall District Representative. Redbud District?
I'm going to postpone until January, sir.
Thank you, sir. Extension Leadership Council, wait a minute. Extension Leadership Council, yes. Shawnee District?
Mr. Chairman, the Extension Unit Coordinator is recommending appointment of Carolyn Rutherford. I've talked with Ms. Trout, and she's okay with this, and I would recommend Carolyn Rutherford for appointment.
All right, we have a recommendation, a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ms. Rutherford is appointed. Extension Leadership is due in February.
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I am ready.
It is.
To make, okay. I would make a motion that Heather McKay, a Member-at-Large Representative, and Ruth Bowden, a Member-at-Large Representative to the Extension Leadership Council, be reappointed.
Motion to reappoint both is our second.
Second.
In the second, any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. McKay and Ms. Bowden are reappointed. I think that brings us to the end of the list. All right. Parks and Recs Commission, Supervisor Wells?
Mr. Chairman, Parks and Rec has met, and we've discussed a lot of items on that, and I think that's where we just need to be with that, there's nothing needs to come before the Board this evening.
I'm sorry, do what?
I was just giving a report on the things that we covered in Parks and Rec, and I said I don't think there's anything that needs to come for the Board's approval tonight. I could be wrong on that.
On the top of the memo, it says items requiring Board action, are we?
Give me just a chance.
Ready for that this evening? Would you gentlemen like to present those two?
Oh, yeah, okay.
I think there's a resolution for acceptance of right-of-way, I believe.
Correct, there's two items that...
Go ahead.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, John Truchel with Parks and Recreation. So we have the right-of-way donation for the Abrams Creek Trail Alignment.
John.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
Right. So one of the landowners for property of the Abrams Creek Alignment has requested assurance that should they wish to donate land to the county for the trail, that the county would accept the land for the trail, and that's, the attached resolution provides the assurance and allows the acceptance of the property in the event that it is donated. So the property owner is considering that as an option, has indicated that that's an option that they are interested in pursuing and just want the assurance that if they go through the effort of, you know, the process on their side, that they would have a willing recipient. So the Parks and Recreation Commission is recommending that be accepted, be adopted, the resolution.
Are there any questions, Mr. Tucker? All right, how would the Board like to handle the resolution request?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd move that the resolution be approved, I think this is a good way to help parks in this county, so I'd move that it be approved.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And the second. All right, is there any discussion? I agree that this is outstanding step, well done, and we certainly appreciative that the landowner is willing to help us. No further discussion? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. And then we have a Rosehill Memorandum?
Correct, this item is an addendum to the Rosehill Memorandum of Understanding, and what this allows us to do is to develop some natural surface trails on the Rosehill Park property. It was always the intent in our initial discussions with Museum of the Shenandoah Valley on the Rosehill property to have these trails, and this just formalizes it and allows us to move forward. We do have a scout candidate that's interested in putting in one of the trails, so there's no cost associated to this for the county, it's just the formal step that needs to be taken.
Questions, Mr. Tucker? Anyone? Would the Board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd move for approval, I think that scouting is a good thing, hiking is a good thing, so I'd move for approval.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Anyone? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. Thank you very much, sir. All right, that will bring us to public hearing, conditional use permit 0717. Klein?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, I'm here this evening before you with conditional use permit 0717 for Caroline Dixie Shuland, which was submitted for the construction of a special event facility in the RA Rural Area Zoning District. The property is located at 238 Barracks Lane, Winchester, and is identified with property identification number 52-A-261 in the Bat Creek Magisterial District. Again, the property is located at 283 Barracks Lane in the Bat Creek Magisterial District with PIN 52-A-261. The property is presently zoned RA Rural Areas, and the current land use is agriculture and open space. The applicant is proposing, through a conditional use permit, a special event facility for weddings and other similar type events. Here's an overview of the applicant's property, which is highlighted in black. You have Roundhill Road. The property is served via Woodchuck Lane through a private driveway on the applicant's property known as Barracks Lane. For reference, the old Roundhill Volunteer Fire Station is located here, and the property is approximately 138 acres. The applicant is seeking to construct a 5,000-square-foot special event center with permanent restroom facilities, a prep kitchen, and storage. The applicant is also proposing on their property a 600-square-foot detached bridal suite and an outdoor concrete patio and gazebo. The facility may accommodate up to 280 persons, and staff would note that the actual occupancy not to exceed 280 persons will be determined at the time of site plan depending on the configuration of the building by the county's building official. The facility may be developed in phases, and the design and architecture of the building will be consistent with the county's rural areas as is stated in the applicant's application. Here's an overview of the applicant's proposal. Again, for reference, you have Roundhill Road, or sorry, Woodchuck Lane here, and the proposed entrance on Barracks Lane, which is a private driveway on the applicant's property, is here. The event center, parking area, and outdoor space is located to the rear of the property, approximately 1,700 feet from Barracks Lane, and approximately 2,400 feet from the Roundhill Fire Station. The closest residence along Woodchuck Lane is approximately 1,300 feet away. This proposed conditional use is consistent with the county's 2035 Comprehensive Plan, which supports opportunities for agritourism and agribusiness in our rural areas. The Board of Supervisors approved special event facilities as a conditional use in the RA Zoning District as part of an ordinance amendment in May of 2017. The applicant has addressed all review agency comments, including site access, compliance with building and fire code, and safety, and the proposed use is consistent with the county's policies and regulations. Should the Board of Supervisors find this use to be appropriate, the Planning Commission has recommended the following conditions. Number one, all review agency comments shall be complied with at all times. An engineered site plan shall be submitted and approved by Frederick County prior to the establishment of the use, and all new buildings will require building permits. Events shall start no earlier than 10:00 a.m., and all events and related activities shall conclude by midnight. Further, all outside music shall conclude by 9:00 p.m., and music may continue indoors until the conclusion of the event. All lighting on the site shall be downcast to avoid glare onto adjacent properties and residences, and access to the site shall be provided to Woodchuck Lane, Route 654, via Barracks Lane, a private internal access drive. The applicant shall relocate Barracks Lane on their property to ensure the access drive to the event center is not immediately adjacent to the southern property boundary of parcel We envision that that would look something like this, where the driveway comes straight in from Woodchuck Lane and does not curve around that adjacent property. In the future, should the owner of the parcel be able to secure private access to Cathar Lane, Route 711, Roundhill Road, Route 803, or Woodchuck Lane, Route 654, through a recorded deed of easement or written consent from the property owner, a new conditional use permit would not be required to implement such access. Events may accommodate up to and not to exceed 280 persons, and one monument-style sign would be permitted. Any expansion or modification of this use would require the approval of a new conditional use permit. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item on September 20. Following a public meeting on November 1, the Planning Commission recommended approval. Following a public hearing this evening, staff is seeking action from the Board of Supervisors on this proposed conditional use permit. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and the applicant is here this evening along with the co-applicant and the property owner, should you have any additional questions. Thank you.
Questions, Mr. Klein? Seeing none? Thank you, sir. Applicants like to add anything? We could have your name, Magisterial District, please.
My name's Dixie Shuland, I'm from the Bat Creek District. I feel pretty confident I've reached out to all neighbors and all the Planning Commission and also the Board of Supervisors here tonight, so I hope that at this point in time we've answered most questions to this point, to the best of our ability, and exhausted a lot of other outlets and kind of things to try to meet the needs of the community as well. I just kind of want to remind everybody that we were hoping just to do this about two days a week, and we were able to find as few of you were able to drive out kind of the most isolated portion of the farm in itself to kind of allow for this not to be a big burden on anybody in the community. And, you know, again, just to remind you, our hope is to mitigate the cost of the mortgage that we started in January with this farm, and maintain and thrive with agriculture in our community here with our local farms, so I don't know, do you want to introduce, will my mom introduce herself?
Great, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Claire Boyd, and I'm in the Bat Creek District, and as probably most of you are aware, I've been running an events barn for the last five years, approximately about 100, maybe 150 yards from most of our neighbors, and we've had very little complaints. When we first started, it's easy to look around and kind of go, oh, we need to do this, we need to do this, but I want to comment that when the people come, whether they're coming from, especially from Northern Virginia and the DC area, they see what we see, and that is, it's a beautiful area, it's a beautiful county. I know a lot of friends that are going over into Loudoun to get married because there aren't very many places in Frederick County, and then to hear the people that come over the mountain to come out and see us, and they look around and they see the beautiful county that we have, we think it's a tremendous asset to be able to offer this venue, and it's a chance for us to kind of highlight the beauty of Frederick County. We've had people actually even move to the area because of it, and I think we have also tried to consider, as you mentioned, to place it in the area that would have least impact on the neighborhood, and we just hope that you consider, this is probably one of the very few things that we can do agritourism-wise that has the lowest amount of impact. If you have a vineyard, you can have tons of traffic. If you have even a farm market, they're open seven days a week, this is basically two days a week, your biggest bulk of traffic comes within 15 minutes, and then it leaves maybe over an hour, so it's a very low-impact situation, and I hope that that is one of the things you consider. I realize that noise is a big consideration, I don't think there have been any complaints about even other places, when we drove by Museum of Shenandoah Valley, they have weddings, they have neighbors all around them. If we're subject to these concerns, I would think at least we would take into consideration as well some of the other places and see what type of concerns their neighbors have had, because it doesn't seem like there have been any, so I hope that this complaint is recognized as one that seems like it's going to be loud, it's going to be an enclosed structure. Mine isn't totally enclosed, the doors are typically open when people have events, and still our neighbors have said nothing that I'm aware of about it. We do check with them, because that's what we have to do. We also look at, I know trash has been mentioned as a possible concern, if you're running a venue, you're doing appointments, the last thing you want is any type of trash around for people to see it, that would just be bad business practice, so I hope that you realize that we take it, you know, very seriously, and we will consider throughout running this business what is concerns the neighbors and do what we can, and again, we've got, my cellphone is right on my website, people can call me anytime, it's not secret, and I know my daughter has sent it out, so I do hope that the concerns will be looked at, but also realize that I don't think it is going to have the impact that people are concerned with. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. If you would, if you'd come forward, give us your name and your Magisterial District, limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Good evening, good evening, Board members. My name's Sarah Snow, and I'm in the Gainesboro District, and I live at 712 Roundhill Road. I hope you can hear me all right.
Just pull it down, Miss, yes, there you go, thank you.
I'm just here to say I personally do not have a problem with Ms. Shuland's having an event facility at 283 Barracks Lane. All the concerns people have with noise, traffic, trash are understandable, and I've thought about these concerns too, but I know where Ms. Shuland comes from, she is also a Boyd, Carolyn, also known as Dixie, Boyd Shuland. Her folks, Claire and Bobby Boyd, are farmers, as a matter of fact, second-generation farmers, making Ms. Shuland third-generation farmers. They know the land, they know cows, they know sheep, they know crops, all the farming things that can enhance a special event center, they have. Dixie's mom, Claire, has her own event facility, and you may visit the site at cloverdalebarn.com to see how beautiful it is and read the many, many reviews. Started in 2012 with a guest capacity of 150-plus, Cloverdale Barn holds weddings, birthdays, fundraisers, anniversaries, and much, much more. That's what Ms. Shuland plans for her event facility. I refer to Cloverdale Barn, which is located at 2368 Cedar Creek Grade, because it should be known that in checking with the Frederick County Sheriff's Department, there is no history of any complaints regarding event noise, event trash, or event traffic. I repeat, no complaints. The only report that the Sheriff's Department had to respond to at the above address was a complaint in January 2017 for vandalism, and other occasional calls responded to for loose cows on Cedar Creek Grade and a lost dog. They're farmers, this call record goes back to 2007. I'm not denying the possibility that problems could occur during events, but Cloverdale Barn, as an example, does have a remarkable track record, very remarkable. Anyway, let me just say, changes go on, somehow we do adjust, and life continues. So for me, I would like to be more on the positive side and wish Ms. Shuland the best with what she wants, after all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Stanifer, and my home is at 109 Woodchuck Lane in the Bat Creek District. You've received many letters and heard several of my neighbors speak to the impacts of this venture on our community, our homes, and our lives. This decision cannot be taken lightly and without considering correct and complete information. The Roundhill community residents are concerned with traffic impacts, personal safety, potential damages, noise, and property values. I also understand that keeping the traffic off Woodchuck Lane, my street, presents other issues. There are other options and other impacts to consider. Several of you on the Board have met with residents of our community, taken our phone calls, and answered our emails. I just wanted to sincerely thank you all for your time and efforts to consider the many sides to this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Claire McDonald, I'm the head of the Independent School of Winchester, and I think I've spoken with several of you this afternoon. Thank you for entertaining my letter last night and calls from Board members today. We took a look at what was posted last night on the conditional use permit, and it looked like the plan was to route the driveways like the plan was to route the driveway through the fire hall at Round Hill Road. It sounds from this presentation like that has changed?
Don't do questions and answers, but this is actually the application that was submitted to the planning commission that they dealt with.
So it was changed from what was posted last night?
It hasn't yet. This discussion is taking place, but that has not happened yet.
Okay. So I'll, I'll give my comment.
That doesn't have the authority to change the recommendation the PC sends to us.
Okay. So I'm just going to go ahead.
Discussions do continue often.
So should I just go ahead and give my comment, then?
Yes, please.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. So the fire hall is currently under contract with contingencies to be sold to our school, the Independent School of Winchester, with a closing date of February 1st. We have no issue with the event center. We're here to help find solutions that creates, that create win-wins for everyone. That said, we're very concerned about the event center potentially using that easement that goes, that kind of bisects the property of the fire hall. Obviously, the most important concern from our perspective is the health and safety of our students. As it stands, the driveway currently has very, very limited traffic. We're talking about a few trucks, you know, once or twice a day. With the advent of an event center, we would undoubtedly see many more vehicles driving through the property. According to the CUP, as we read it last night, the event center could begin events as early as 9:00 AM, it looks like that's been changed to 10:00 AM, with as many as 280 people. And while we understand that the current plan is to use the center for weddings and just on weekends and very occasionally, as permanent owners of the property, we really have to look into the future. If the event center is a success, the CUP allows for business conferences, all sorts of events, seven days a week, beginning at 10:00 AM, with all that traffic going through our property. The driveway which bisects the property is not a road, and it lacks a speed limit, speed bumps, and a crosswalk. It also seems likely that the event center would allow the consumption of alcohol, and hence, we could be dealing from time to time with intoxicated drivers. We're concerned that in an effort to safeguard our students, ISW would incur a number of costs that we have not anticipated or built into our budgets, fencing, extra personnel, insurance, et cetera. The potential cost of maintaining a driveway with all that additional traffic as well is also a really serious issue for us. We're also, we were surprised too that, that the fire hall was being considered as an option, because VDOT's comment was that the Round Hill Road option isn't a great location either with its undesirable skew of the railroad tracks, which are located in the functional area of the intersection. So we respectfully request that you table this for another 30 days to give all respective parties a chance to try to work out something that's a win-win for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Brett Haynes, principal broker of Oak Crest Commercial. I represent the Round Hill Fire Company, and I'm here to represent them. None of the members were able to make it this evening. Echo a lot of the comments that were made by the Independent School. The fire company has no particular issue with the event center concept. Their concern is really the, the right-of-way situation. And as has been put forth today, it sounds like it's been largely addressed, if it remains that way, although it's not particularly clear to me, and I don't know that it would be clear to them, that securing access through the right-of-way would have to be by written agreement of all parties, because I don't think that that particular right-of-way was put in place anticipating a burden of use for this type of facility. And increasing the use to this level would incur additional costs, whether it's the fire company that owns it, Independent School, or some other party that, again, it was not really intended for. You know, I think that the access as put forward from a state road, Barracks, Barracks Lane, is probably the most appropriate or potentially cathers. I think the least desirable is a private right-of-way, which was never intended for that. But it, it sounds like, all in all, the concept is sound. I just think that the option of the Round Hill easement should be removed from the, from the options, or at least make it specifically known that it must be an agreement by all parties, whether it's, I guess, basically the current owner. And I think that would be a prudent thing to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am?
Hello. I'm Katie Boyd from the Back Creek District. I'm in favor of the wedding barn being built. You can't, I had our barn that we use for event center right now, you can't hear music from 100 feet. And then it also will be, boost, having worked in retail, it will be, boost retail and local economy. And it also may boost population, because I know my mom had wedding, people come from all over the US to get married, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Good evening. I'm Rocky Keplinger. I live in the Back Creek Magisterial District, and I live at 218 Woodchuck Lane, which intersects Barracks Lane. First of all, if you go back and look at the Cloverdale Farm, it actually sits in a valley. The residents up above them are kind of down below a hill on the other side, Cedar Creek Grace condo in a valley. It's nothing flat like we have. So there is a difference between Cloverdale Barn and this wide-open field that's in a big valley. Let's get that straight. There's less houses near the Cloverdale Barn. We have 29 houses at Woodchuck Lane. We've addressed with most of you supervisors and planning commission, the traffic that's going to jam up our road. If there's 140 cars and they spaced 30 feet apart, and one car stops at Walmart, the last car will still be sitting in front of my house. That's what concerns us with the safety. I understand the concerns of the school. That property at the fire hall was put there by my father-in-law. He helped the fire hall get started, and he put that right-of-way in for people behind the fire hall to access his property. And he didn't put any stipulations on it. Of course, a lot of that's not in writing, but it's how that 50-foot got right-of-way in there so he could access it for future development, for fruit, whatever he used it for. So the school is going to work Monday through Friday. The Shulands have an opportunity to do something with their property, and they have the right to do something with their property. They just need to take the least impact on our citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Barbara Singhhouse. I live at 775 Round Hill Road in the Back Creek District, and I live on the possible ingress egress on Round Hill Road. The property right-of-way runs probably 25 or 30 feet in front of my house and goes around my house over to Mr. Keplinger's. It is, is going to have a tremendous impact on the proposed school and possibly the sale of the fire hall for that purpose. It is a lot of things that are possibilities of being an impact, some things I don't think have even been thought of. There are a lot of people on Round Hill Road that don't have wells, can't get wells, and are still living with sisters. There are a lot of people that have wells that are 900 to 1,000 feet deep to get something, two gallons a minute. 280 people flushing the toilet once or twice, and all the water that would be involved in that could possibly dry up all of our wells. And I don't think that's even been considered. But I think overall, Round Hill Road should not be considered as an access for ingress egress at all. Mrs. Shuland has been offered a least defensive offer of ingress egress from Round Hill Road by Mr. Keplinger, whereby he would put the road in from Round Hill Road behind our properties and what's on Woodchuck Lane. That would be the least impact for everybody, and she does not want to consider that for whatever reason. But I hope you all will consider that Round Hill Road is not a viable option. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Lisa Bell, and I actually own three homes on Woodchuck Lane. And I have known the Boyd's for 23 years. I'm thinking how old my son is, because she was my first babysitter. They're a wonderful family, and I was very happy to hear that this event center was something that they were going to consider to do. When I think about the farm that has been there for so long, and they could have been sold for, for things that would bring quite a bit more issues, I think, to the table after listening to everybody tonight. I think having a big old sub-development there would be much larger concern than what I've heard this evening. And from what I understand, the event center is something that most likely will be used on weekends, and I don't feel that that is such an issue for a school. Or certainly not as large of one. And I, I feel that in today's age, people are a lot more responsible when they go to weddings. I haven't certainly heard of, of people being arrested for drunk driving after, after events like that. So I think some of the things aren't, aren't very warranted compared to what you could be getting if the farm was sold and, and a larger subdivision or something like that had, would come to mind. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone? Yes, sir?
I'm Bob Boyd from Back Creek District, and thank you all. But our, we're trying to farm. This is 130 acres, and I think this might let my family continue to do it another generation if they make a little money. And I think it's such a low impact, but, but I know that these people are right on some of these concerns, so. But we usually try to help them personally, and I think some of the other things I've heard, I think there's some land trades involved and stuff that we just don't want to do right now. We are very much wanting to love this county, and we like doing what we're doing, but there gets to be a time where there's too many people, I think. And I've heard from many farmers, it's, you know, you can't farm in the city, so. But what I'd like to say is, we are not in charge of people's view shed. There are smells. There are noise, and it gets to the point where you're just going, I don't know. What do you all want us to do? So don't table it 30 days, because I don't know about you all, but every six months, I'm getting a little older, but I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Ross Hewitt, Back Creek District, live at 230 Miller Road and border of the Boyd Farm on the back of my property. And I'm within a couple hundred yards of the Cloverdale Barn Event Center right now, so I can kind of speak to the impact that has, which is little to none, except for our little girls every weekend during wedding season, you know, looking to see if they can see any bridesmaids or brides or grooms or whatever. But anyhow, so that, so for us, it's a positive, definitely a positive. A big reason we moved out to that part of the county was because it's absolutely beautiful. I come from a farm similar to that, and you can count the full-time farmers on one hand, my parents being one, and the Boyd's being one of the other few. So just wanted to kind of stand up with the agriculture community. I see this as, like the last two people just, just said, as a third generation saying, how can I make, rather than come back and take a piece of this pie, which is the farm, how can I make this pie bigger and, and make a living off of it? So you discourage them or push them out and have them choose other career paths or whatever. We're not talking about the 130 acres or whatever it is. You're talking about over 1,000 acres, and farm families are tight-knit, and that's kind of what, you know, what you're looking at there. You're going to be looking at another Snowden Bridge or whatever. So the Boyd's go, I'm going to go back to Apple Pie Ridge, I guess, or wherever. But, but as far as that, just absolutely beautiful area, the whole farm, so you got to look at not 130 acres, it's over 1,000 acres there. And, and I just, you know, we don't want to see, we don't want to have to build a 13th elementary school, another high school, and this and that for another Snowden Bridge, et cetera. I remember that back when I was in high school, stop the shockwave, you know, for the industrial park. And then all of a sudden, what do we get? We get 3,000 homes going in there. And so it would have been better all being industrial park. But, but anyhow, so I just want to stand to the validity of their ag operation. I saw in the paper a couple weeks ago, one flew through kind of under the radar out Apple Pie Ridge, and as working on that job out there, that one, I guess, got approved as conditional use, and that was an out-of-towner who's built a multimillion-dollar wedding facility that is now building a hobby farm around it. Where here, we have a legitimate, multi-generational farm family that is going to incorporate this wedding venue into the farming operation. So I think we just need to keep everything in mind that this is a legitimate farming operation and not some hobby farm that all of a sudden, you know, in other words, it's going to be a wedding venue with a hobby farm around it. It's the real deal. And the sad part about agriculture is, a lot of times, you have to find off-farm income to bring on to make it continue. And it stinks because of the blood, blood, sweat, and tears that goes into it doesn't get paid back in monetary value. And just hopefully Dixie can make it, and I know she's putting everything on the line, so I wish her the best. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
My name is Greg Miller. I'm from Back Creek District and also 388 Woodchuck Lane. My wife and I moved there 47 years ago. And obviously, anyone with a concern on Woodchuck Lane is talking about the concern of change, and the change being increased traffic, you know, the change being the possibility of, of noise. And of course, the access is going to determine where the traffic's going to be. And you've, you're, you're faced with the, with the prospect of what they've, the planning commission has proposed. My concern is both of those areas, but the noise area in particular for us, because it can affect the value of our home. We noted from a recent event just down our road where there was a wedding, and we could hear the vows. We could hear the music. We could hear everything that was said, and we're a quarter mile away. We know that that field behind us where the event center's going to be located is no further away than that, and there's nothing blocking it, no other houses or anything. It's just an open field. And we're not trying to stand in the way of progress or what Ms. Shuland wants to do. We just want to try to protect our interests, and we would like to see perhaps some type of a barrier be constructed, some trees or something else be planted there that would restrict some of that sound, or perhaps the amplified sound just be kept inside. You know, orchestral music would not be fine outside, but amplified music was what we were facing several weeks ago. And on a one-time event, that's okay, but on a nice summer evening, when we want to be outside and enjoying ourselves, we don't want to be listening to the music in the neighborhood. Now, I know it's been mentioned that other event centers haven't had that complaint, and maybe that's something that would not be a problem, but I see outside amplified music as a problem that is going to affect our property value. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to comment? Anyone at all? Yes, sir?
My name's Toby Cunningham. I live at 138 Woodchuck Lane in the Back Creek District. I live on the top of a blind hill on Woodchuck Lane, and I go to bed early on weekends. I go bedtime 11 o'clock because I get up early. So I'm going to have all this traffic coming by my house. I'm about 30 feet from the road. So I'm going to have all this traffic shining lights in my bedroom, shine all this music, all this noise, probably be car horns, and who knows what else, because it's going to be a backup when they hit Round Hill Road. There's no way about it. And there's a blind hill on Round Hill Road, too. Sometimes when I pull out on Round Hill Road, I look, there's a car right on behind my bumper. So I'm scared about my safety trying to get out of my driveway and all the noise at night after I'm in bed. What am I supposed to do? Be woken up all the time? Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to comment? Anyone at all? Last chance. All right. We thank you for your time. Thank you for your comments. We'll close the public input portion of the meeting. We offer the applicants an opportunity to address any of the concerns they've heard if they would like. If it's not necessary, would you like an opportunity?
If I'm all thumbs, too. Okay.
Any way you'd like to go about it, it's fine.
Thank you. Again, I'm Dixie from Back Creek District, Claire. I think some of the things we just want to kind of quickly cover, we probably already mentioned maybe at the Planning Commission, so we'll try to keep it brief. We can elaborate if you will have further questions, but one of the things that came up was the well and the water and the groundwater. We have actually already done our Health Department application, and it has, they, I guess, also sent a representative from the Virginia Department of Health of Office of Drinking Water. They made a site visit, and engineers, and they approved the well location, and they were impressed with the acreage and everything, and thought that it would not be a problem at all. They said that with the regulations we have, there actually is not a setback distance from well to well, but they were, this proposed well is several hundred feet away from the neighboring existing wells, so they commended us for that. So, I think one that, let's see, that's kind of the, one that kind of is, well, I think it's worth mentioning, kind of, the obvious problem is kind of, you know, which way are we going to come in this place? Because it, whatever access point that we choose, it seems as though somebody's going to be upset. I don't think that there's going to be a way to make everybody happy, but I think the key to this all is going to be communication, and with confidence, I think we'll be able to work out whatever, with whichever kind of entrance that we pick. I think the biggest thing is just being cordial with the neighbors and seeing what concerns they have and working with them, whether it be financially or communicating. I know they had mentioned like speed bumps and those kind of things. I think, you know, with this operation, with any rate of success, we would love to kind of work together with, you know, the landowners and see if there's a way we can compromise and make things work and kind of keep everybody happy. And I think, like we mentioned, I think it'll be pretty low impact. It's not going to be a lot of cars every day. It's just going to be, you know, two days a week, and I think primarily over the weekend. Unfortunately, we don't really want to limit it just to weekends, because there are sometimes like holiday weekends and stuff, and people do things on Monday, and then sometimes like lower, like birthday parties and stuff during the week, some parents will decide to do, but don't want to kind of pay the weekend fees that are hiked up a little bit in costs. So kind of just from a business perspective, keeping everything open. But it's important to mention that we are not doing the commercial septic, and that goes back to the septic system and two different avenues. One is the fact that I don't think it'll be a significant impact in terms of the septic, but the other thing is, we do have septic constraints. We are only allowed to, from a septic perspective, I believe it's three or four days a week for like six hours, eight hours. So it's not ever going to be seven days a week of 280 people. It's not actually permitted with our septic system, because I've chosen not to go with the commercial septic, which about triples the price. So just for what it's worth, I mean, we may one week just have something Monday, nothing Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It just will depend week to week, but I didn't really want to put it in kind of the provisions, add that as a constraint, because we just never know what day the market is going to be that people are interested in having their events. I can go into the, one of the other things that have kind of come up is the sound. Do you want to kind of start? Um, this is one of the slides that we kind of did with the Planning Commission, but I kind of looked at a lot of the complaint letters and looked at where the most of the concerns were. I would say a majority of the complaints with the, at least, I would say both of the Planning Commission were, kind of right when you came in Woodchuck Lane, a lot of those houses had complaints with the traffic. So that kind of just shows the distances between the houses and where our proposed event centers. It reminds us that it is in the back of the property itself, so it is, if I don't say it enough, but it is pretty isolated back there. I think it's hard to kind of comprehend what 1,388 feet is and what's 2,100 feet and those kind of things. But just kind of, there's a few slides, and we'll go through them really quick, because I know there's other things on the agenda tonight. But we did kind of look at some of Loudoun County's event centers, and they have a significant amount. It was hard to actually scroll through all of them. There was at least 20. So when compared to Frederick County from a economic impact, it is important to note that I do think there's a lot of room for growth in this department. We could talk all day about how this is wonderful for the county and how it stores the money, and that's wonderful, we could talk about that. But I know we've already addressed that in the other meetings, but just really quick, this is the Shadow Creek Event Center. It's in Percival. I went on their GIS map. It's very similar to ours. It didn't really show really well what the houses looked like, but you can kind of see there, there's a bunch of houses, and if you scroll over here, there's the event center. And you can see, I mean, the house that I'm selecting right there, only 600 feet. And again, if we remind, the closest, the Woodchuck Lane houses are 1,388 feet, so it's double that. Another reminder is the fact that the Round Hill Fire Department has been for years used for bingo night, and the distance from these houses on Woodchuck Lane to the Round Hill Fire Department is more than double the distance, or this is double that distance. So in terms of sound, if that wasn't a problem, I don't anticipate this to also present any kind of barriers in that regard. This is another house in Loudoun County, the Burkeby House. I don't think I need to say anything else with that slide. I mean, it's just, and the interesting part about that event center is it said it was mainly all tent weddings, so that was definitely a surprise. And those aren't all businesses. A lot of houses are integrated in that neighborhood. Russ Mainer House, similar. I don't know if I truly did a good job kind of showing that one, but the, there's just kind of to the right side there, I mean, there's just thousands of houses. And that distance from that event center to those thousands of houses is 1,680 feet. And again, like we said, we're talking 1,400 feet to just the tent houses here, so, I mean, they do have houses within 200 feet, but just those thousands of houses are within the same margin that we're talking about for this event center. Blue Hill Farm is 300 feet to these houses, and that one's in Waterford, I'm sorry, can't talk. But you can just see they're kind of sporadic, which is nice, but there's just as many houses in a dense area. This Vineyard, similar thing, 500 feet, houses everywhere. I put the yellow arrows just to kind of help see where they are. Fox Chase Farms, 644 feet to the, you know, nearest houses, so double, I mean, half of what ours would be. White Hall Estate, same thing. And these are, these are big houses, so the fact that these people haven't, you know, had more grievances kind of surprises me, too, within their Loudoun County and everything. I'm not sure what came first, but I would say most of these agritourism type things are pretty relatively new. So, and then Raspberry Plains, again, you can see in that picture, there's just houses everywhere. 345 feet, 734 to those big houses behind it. So again, half of what ours is. Murray Hill, 689 feet to those closer ones, to that giant neighborhood down there, 1,600 feet. There's a new one called 48 Fields. I couldn't find a lot of information, but houses within 82 feet. So that kind of, I think, addresses the sound some. I just wanted to take the time just to kind of say, and, you know, I don't, I guess, follow the Loudoun County kind of the politics and stuff, but as far as I know, this has never presented an issue. And their sound ordinance is a little bit more specific than ours, and they actually have, I guess, constraints and stuff, but it's very, their entertainment is allowed, how would I put it? Let's see. For the wineries and stuff, no outdoor music after 11:00 PM is what their rule is, and it's the same with the bed and breakfast, the country ends in the event center. So by us doing 9:00 PM, I think that's actually pretty lenient, so I don't think that we'd want to be any more restrictive than that. But again, just a reminder that I think communication is the key here, and just being cordial with the neighbors and knowing that, you know, we're willing to work with them if, a cellphone call away, if we need to go talk to a DJ or talk to, you know, talk to a band or whatever. I think it's hard to, you know, the hypocrisy and allowing kind of the wineries and the fruit markets and all these other, you know, agritourism, they're, you know, technically allowed to have seven-day-a-week events, 24 hours a day. There's really no constriction. So I'd hate to kind of add so many things that this makes my business, you know, not conducive to a successful business. But I, you know, if the neighbors aren't happy, our business will never be successful. So I think that's just important to know, that we'd like to kind of maintain that. And I know my mom will add some stuff probably quickly, but we do plan to add landscaping. I think that was one of the things, as soon as we bought the farm, I think we were all like, we need something. So we had it actually lined up last week, but we ran out of time to get some trees in the ground. And there was one other thing, but go ahead, Mom.
Well, I know they mentioned a lot about the alcohol, and I would agree that many people are highly concerned, all the events buy event insurance, but nope, anybody's serving alcohol these days, especially if you're a private individual. You're always going to be concerned, and frankly, you know, I've seen people take people home if that was needed, but most of them have either had a driver pick up, such as a limousine or bus or one of the vans. I think most weddings where they have had concerns about that, they're probably safer than, you know, people that are going to, you know, out to restaurants and such, because they plan on people who are celebrating, and they have to address that issue. It's a personal as well as a moral responsibility. Can't think of any other issues that you might want me?
The only other thing, I think, I know my dad mentioned it, but we really would encourage a vote tonight. I know it sounds like there's a lot of gray areas, but I feel like the county and ourselves have kind of exhausted resources and avenues that we could take at this point. I really think we kind of started meeting with the county back in February, and we were patient for the new kind of event center CUP to pass in May. And so we're nearing a year in this process, and I feel like we've done everything up to date. I think, you know, the biggest concern's going to be the entrance, and I don't think, I think we're going to, you know, have grievances irregardless of what way we went. I think some could look at the fact that still the, the fire hall isn't sold yet, it's still, you know, under contract, so it's still time to back out if it's the biggest concern, but I think, I'm confident that I met with Ms. McDonald, and I think we'll be able to kind of accomplish something in terms of open communication if we were to go that way. But I just really think it would be wonderful to have a vote tonight, regardless of the outcome. We'd like to get a shovel to the ground one day. So I think those are kind of the main things. So if you have any questions for us?
If you would hold on just a moment. Do any board members have questions, Ms. Boyd, Ms. Shuland? Anyone? Roger Lofton?
Ms. Shuland, Mrs. Boyd, I appreciate your presentation and your patience in all this process. Two things that I hear in repetition are noise and access. And I see you've done a lot of research on the noise, and I hear you say that you've got cellphones and you're willing to intercede if the noise levels exceed what the neighbors think is a reasonable level. I don't know how to put that into a condition. I would just ask you here for the record that if, in fact, the neighbors do find the noise objectionable, that they will be able to call one of the two of you or someone that you designate, and that you will try to, to the best of your ability, reduce that noise level. And at some point, maybe, as one of the gentlemen suggested, you might put in a row of shrubs, trees, or something that, especially along that Woodchuck Lane area, that if it becomes a nuisance, that you would consider doing that. Secondly, access. I would agree, I think access off Woodchuck Lane is problematic at best. And we have talked before, and if Mr. Klein, if you could come up, I'd like to show you a new condition that would replace conditions six and seven, which six is access provided by Woodchuck Lane and Barrick's Lane, and seven is if you can find something different, then you could do that without coming back with a new CIP. This condition lays out the fact that your access would be through that dedicated right-of-way from Round Hill Road through the Round Hill Fire Company property. That's been a dedicated, according to our county attorney, that is something that is viable and legal. Would you be willing to accept this condition to replace six and seven? And this condition basically says you will access your property from Round Hill Road through this private access easement. Okay? All right.
If I can add one clarifying point to that, it would also allow them to maintain their entrance at Barrick's Lane, but it would be for private use only, not for the special event center. So they could continue to use it for their farming operation, or if they're coming and going to the property, but they would not be able to use it for the special event center. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay. Is that acceptable? That's all the questions.
Other supervisors, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Carth.
Just a few things. First of all, I'm very sympathetic to the agritourism need and support of farming in the community, having been the grandson and great-grandson of generations of farmers myself. You mentioned that this is an agritourism-related business. The county code currently provides for farmers to have this type of use on their farm without going through the CUP process. Can you explain why you decided to go through the CUP process versus going the route that most of the other farmers and wineries, et cetera, have done in the county?
At present, this property does not join our current operation, so unfortunately, it would not necessarily be an accessory use at this point in time. If we had found a way to kind of join the properties, it would certainly be an accessory use to our bigger operation of the cattle and the sheep and the hay that we currently do. But as it stands right now, joining 138 acres of hay would be hard to justify with the county as that being the accessory, or being the primary to this only being accessory. We have exported. It's not out of the question that we won't instead do an agriculture use. I think from a cost-effective business perspective, it would have its advantages, but our family has never spent this much money to put anything forth, such as an event center. It's not going to be cheap. We want it to be beautiful. We want it to be positive in the county. We want to do it right. We don't want to put up, you know, $400,000, $500,000, rest of something, and then be told that, you know, you can't do it, or, you know, if the neighbors complain, then we would have, I think, more heartache. We'd have a harder time. You know, it's already done, and we'll have to make the ends meet of that new mortgage in addition to this property. So I guess we're just kind of scared. We're too scared to do such a huge financial burden in fear of repercussions, that it would maybe not be able to actually be implemented and used as an event center. So we played it safe, and we've been working with the county pretty closely and hoping to do everything the right way. But, I mean, again, it's not out of the question.
And then a related question. The code, as it's currently written, for farming operations to have these accessory uses is sort of done on the presumption that you must have that farming operation in place in order to continue your accessory use for an event center, or a vineyard, or winery, what have you. The fact that you're going through the CUP process, it would seem like there would be no guarantee that the rest of the property would have to stay in agricultural use once the CUP is approved. What is your family's thought on the future of that property?
I mean, we plan to farm it. I don't know if my dad or mom could attest to that more, because I'm not personally the one behind the tractor wheel, driving, steering wheel, but...
Well, I mean, we have always farmed. I grew up on a farm, and I can't quite picture doing anything different, but I've also had enough situations with farming that there's a lot of risk involved. And so, yes, we plan on doing it. I'm old enough now that I don't really want to move and have my family here, but, you know, there's always health risks, there's disabilities, all those sort of things, which are frankly very high for farmers. They're probably the highest-risk industry aside from, I think, coal mining or something like that. So, you know, I'd like to tell you that things will never change, but, you know, that's not the way the world works. So, you know, if my husband gets hurt, we're going to be in a bit of a bad situation. And this is actually one of the reasons I want my daughter involved, because if they decide, you know, if they're invested in this operation, then we at least have something to fall back. My son-in-law gets called all the time to help us as is. My husband runs a farm by himself. You know, we're on pretty tight budget as is. So, you know, I think you want me to make a promise of something that, you know, as tight as things are, I can't really, I haven't won the lottery yet. So when I do, then I promise you it will stay that way.
I'm not asking for promises, just trying to get your perspective.
The beauty of this building is the beauty of that land.
So would it be fair to say that as of right now, this may not be an accessory as it would traditionally be seen to an agricultural use, but your plan is to use the remainder of the farm as an agricultural asset? Okay. Then the, I think Mr. Lofton touched on it just a few minutes ago about the traffic being an issue, being a problem at best, or problematic at best, on Woodchuck. And we're now seeing that there's the possibility of using the right-of-way through the Round Hill Fire Company. Ms. Claire McDonald stepped up earlier to discuss her concerns with the fact that they're currently under contract to purchase that property, which I commend you, and I think that's a great... that's a great thing. That, that building's been sitting empty for quite a while now. I think the sale of that property will put some money into the coffers of the Fire Company, which is an asset to the public within the Round Hill community, which I think is a good thing. My, my concern tonight, ladies and gentlemen, is that we didn't really hear about this until the last minute and I haven't had a chance really to discuss with the folks that are going to be the owners of that property. And there's a concern that this could nullify or cause the school to terminate that contract, which I think is a real concern for that community considering that I think there's also an important use in that community fire hall being purchased by a nonprofit that will serve the community and occupy it so it's no longer empty and ablite. Ms. McDonald had asked for more time to present and to me, it just only seems fair that we have an opportunity to hear, hear more about that.
In response to that, I guess I would mention it is and always will remain as a deeded right-of-way. So that same right-of-way could become a subdivision, it could become something that's of higher impact. And I think this low-impact, mainly weekend-type thing actually will be working, not simultaneously with the school, I think it'll actually complement, complement each other very well, Monday through Friday and primarily Saturdays and Sundays. Again, like I mentioned earlier, we can't guarantee that there's never going to be anything at nine in the morning or, you know, one in the afternoon, but I would imagine in terms of the alcohol and those kind of things, I don't think any of that will ever be simultaneous to school. And again, I don't think it's an issue anyways, but I think that the two could complement each other very well. And I think with good communication, we can kind of have some positive relationships and even the event center may become of advantage to a school. I think they could, you know, end up using it for things and, you know, I can't make promises at this point, but I could foresee them having some benefits and kind of reward for allowing, you know, the good relationship that we put forward, so.
So just one follow-up. So am I hearing that you're saying you would be willing to take some time to speak with the school to figure out?
I did approach Ms. McDonald about a month or two ago before we knew that this could be a possibility to come in this way because initially VDOT had kind of said no. They later, with some arm twisting, came around to the idea of us using this as the entrance, which I think is more suitable. I think it doesn't pass any houses really on Round Hill Road, would only go right past Poorhouse Road and there's just a few houses there. So wouldn't it have any impact on Cathar Lane, which similar to this, you would actually be kind of going in somebody's yard, so that's going to have barriers in itself. And then as we mentioned earlier, the Barracks Lane is kind of going by somebody's house despite bushes and those kind of things. I know those neighborhoods had, that neighborhood had a lot of complaints about just the traffic in front of their house and it's, you know, kind of a dead-end street, so they really don't want the cars. So I really don't see that there's another solution. I think this is our only, our only chance is using the Round Hill Fire Department. And I don't really foresee anything changing after, after today. I think it's really been exhausted, kind of the efforts that have been made to try to make this work. So I think this is the solution. I'm confident that we can, you know, form and have a good relationship before they close on the, you know, on the actual school. And I think with a good relationship, I don't think it'll have any, any problems with anything. I think it'll be a non-issue.
I just want to mention one quick thing is typically most weddings occur during school vacations anyway or school holidays. I mean, those, if you have a long weekend, schools aren't in session. A lot of DJs I know are, actually work for the school system or do flowers and things like that. They do go pretty close and work well together. There, I know a lot of teachers that are florists, I know a lot of DJs that are working in the middle school. So typically, I don't see that would be a big issue.
Looking at the school's program, it's kind of neat because it follows some of the same theories that my daughters are at a preschool that do some similar things, but some of it is kind of hands-on and allowing the kids a lot of autonomy and those kind of things. Being as though, I don't believe either parcels with the Round Hill Fire Department are agriculture-zoned. There's a possibility they could even venture to have some animals or livestock adjoining kind of the property and maybe a positive just to allow their students to, you know, I think there would be an element of agretainment that would be beneficial to the school coming from their currently location to this location. I think it would be very beneficial, so.
The board members have any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Shulon, one question on music, it has been addressed on noise. Under your current planning, are you going to have amplified music inside and outside or are you going to cut it at a particular time? Can you just elaborate on what your current thoughts are on that, please?
9:00 PM would be the cutoff for the any outdoor music sound, anything like that. So again, in Loudoun County, they use 11, so...
For amplified music?
Correct.
And has there been any discussion on bringing that amplified music all inside and, and just have it on your outdoor part, hear whatever you hear without it being amplified outside?
There has been. I, I have a lot of problems with it. My understanding, kind of the long and the short, is we don't really have a good sound ordinance in this county, which I think sometimes less rules is better anyways. But the problem with that is there's no meeting in the middle and I have that, it's really hard to kind of meet with because I think that we can meet in the middle. I don't, I am confident we can, but not having the ability to do that, it's kind of an all or none. And I, I don't think that would be good and conducive to our business. I think with the competition, whether it be Valerie Hill or James Charles or any of the fruit markets, I mean, they don't have the same constraints and like my mom said, you know, the museum in the Shenandoah Valley and all those, or I would say at least 70% of the event centers that I mentioned from Loudoun County, they don't have any of those constraints. And I, I think it's important that we allow for it outside.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you both. All right. The board have any questions of staff? Anyone? This is Buck Creek, Roger Lofton.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank everyone for coming out tonight and expressing their views and their opinions. I appreciate that and I appreciate the time all of you have taken to interface with the board of supervisors to let us know what your concerns are. I think about this issue and as you saw up there, that we've had events and we've had permits for events for many a year. And this board saw the wisdom, I think, to promote agritourism and agribusiness. And so we provided a way for these types of centers which are popping up all over the county. I can, I know of three right now that are becoming online probably within the next year. It's a good way, I think, for us to promote agritourism and agribusiness. That's why we decided to codify this, to allow this kind of use. I think about, and I've thought about, the ability of the owner of the property to just sell it and put five-acre lots on it. They could do that. I understand they could get probably around 25 houses on there. And I ask myself, is that a positive or a negative? I view it as a negative. It's called the houses we adrain on our tax base. Means more schools, more children to educate. Traffic, we would, traffic would be allowed on Woodchuck Lane by right. So the impact of this is that it brings in tax base, tax revenue. It has a minimal impact, I think, on that large tract of land. And I know Mr. Boyd has been farming for many a year and I suspect that he wants to continue to do that. So with that being said, and the fact that, oh, let me get back to this. When we, when we talked about moving the right-of-way from Woodchuck Lane, which I agree was not a good idea, we found that this right-of-way that we're mentioning up here was dedicated right-of-way, is usable. I would urge the school that is going to buy that property to work with the Shulons because the right-of-way is in this specific spot now, doesn't mean it has to stay there. So it is an opportunity to configure your property so that it may be a minimal impact for you and for the Shulons. But all in all, I believe this is, I say a minimal impact. It's recognized by the board as a conditional use. I think the conditions that have been put on the applicant are sufficient that it will not cause injury to those living on Woodchuck Lane or around Woodchuck Lane. And I would move for approval of the CUP number 07-17 of Caroline Dixie Shulon for a special event facility.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Discussion? Anyone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me amend that motion to include replacing conditions six and seven with the new condition as stated on the board up there.
Second agrees.
Second agrees. All right, discussion?
Mr. Chairman? You know, history is a good teacher, I think. Gentleman made mention for 900 acres that turned into 2,500 homes. So while there may be some issues, careful what you ask for. The impact with those houses could be a lot worse than what's going here in trying to promote the agritourism. It's just a point that was very, very poignant with me because I go back to that time and where we could have had 900 acres of industrial land and we now have something that's nothing but a burden on the tax dollar. So, you know, this seems to be an appropriate use.
Others?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisors? Microphone, please, sir. Thank you.
This better. I've wrestled with this and we've talked. I'd like to make a couple, I'd like to make a couple of comments and, and a suggestion. The comment that Mr. Boyd made on trying to run a farm and needing additional income, I'm sympathetic to, so I fully understand that. I think that's a valid, legitimate comment. I am concerned about the potential rights-of-way on Cathar Lane through Round Hill and on Woodchuck, and I've wrestled with that. I had a conversation with Mrs. Shulon earlier today and she was helpful on throwing out thoughts and suggestions on how to mitigate the right-of-way through. She is not obligated to those comments, it was just a conversation between the two of us, Mrs. Shulon, and I thank you for that. I've also had a conversation with a potential buyer of the school and their concerns. And that's a new avenue for them and it was new to me in the last 72 hours. So that was a new wrinkle that came into the, into the equation. I've heard Mr. and Mrs. Boyd come up here and speak and I take them at their word that they're trying to go and work with the neighbors. That's an improvement over what I've heard elsewhere, so thank you for that. I'm concerned about the noise after 9 o'clock with the, the amplified music, that is a concern. If there's ways to reduce that, that would be helpful, as Mr. Lofton had said, trying to work with neighbors to reduce that. Not to codify it, but just to be a good neighbor counts. This board has had this now for today and I know that this has been going on through, since last February, but I'm inclined to go and ask for a 30-day extension of the board so that the potential buyer of the school for a piece of property that can be well-used in the county and where the proceeds can go to Round Hill, which helps everybody, and the Boyd's and Mrs. Shulon can work together. Mrs. Shulon made some suggestions that may or may not work, but I think it's worth 30 days to try to figure out whether there's an option that's a win-win. What I'm looking for is something that satisfies everybody and not somebody, over somebody else, and I'm not there yet. So that's my comment for the 30 days. It's not to delay, it's try to solve a problem. And the school, if the school pulls out and does not buy that property and the woman that spoke here is shaking her head that, you know, she's concerned on that, I'm sympathetic to that. And so if they can work this out in a 30-day timeframe, I know we're going through Christmas, I don't think it's the end of the world. And so I'm trying to find something that wins for everybody. So I'd like to go and make a substitute motion, Mr. Chairman, to delay this for 30 days to see if the applicant and the surrounding people can just work those details out.
Would you be willing to make that an amended motion?
I'd make that as...
To the same effect?
That'd be fine, Mr. Chairman.
So there's an amended motion on the floor to delay for 30 days, postpone for 30 days. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter, the amended motion to postpone for 30 days?
No.
Supervisor Wells?
No.
Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Supervisor Fisher?
No.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarty?
Aye.
Chair votes no, motion fails. Now we'll go back. If there are any further discussion on the original amended motion? Anyone? All right, so the motion was to approve with the conditions six and seven replaced with six. Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Nay.
Supervisor McCarty?
Nay.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Conditional use permit 0717 is approved as amended. We thank you all for coming out. We are confident and trust that you all will work together and make this a win-win. We're confident that can happen. Next item is rezoning, 04-17, Carball Business Center. You might want to take the moment. Yep.
Yeah.
I think you can go ahead, Ms. Perkins. Everyone's being nice and considerate. Everyone was being nice and considerate. Folks, carry the discussion out of the room, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a rezoning application to rezone two parcels of land that total a little over 107 acres from the RA, which is the Rural Areas District, to the M1, which is the light industrial district with proffers. Now, the site has an address of 831 Shady Elm Road and is located on the southeastern side of Shady Elm Road, southwest of the intersection of Shady M and, Shady M, excuse me, and Apple Valley Road. And the property is bounded by the CSX Railroad. If I can defer to this screen on your left, we have a location map. Now, the subject properties are outlined in black. You have Shady Elm Road that runs along the frontage. You have the railroad in this location. Now, the properties are located within the limits of the Sewer Water Service Area and are within the limits of the Kernstown Area Plan of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Now, the Kernstown Area Plan identifies the property with an industrial designation as outlined in the Shady Elm Economic Development Area. The Comprehensive Plan also shows the extension of Renaissance Drive through the property. And this is just a map depicting the long-range land use plan. That area in blue is the area designated for industrial. Now, with this request, the applicant has proffered a number of things. These include participation in the cost of the transportation improvements in the nearby area up to a maximum of $1,080,000. There's right-of-way dedications for both Shady Elm and Renaissance Drive. They have limited the number of access points on Renaissance to two. They are proffering to screen the loading docks from Shady Elm Road. There is a prohibition on the number of signs along Shady Elm. They will also do an intensive-level survey of the historic house on the property, which is the Carball House. There's a monetary proffer to fire and rescue in the amount of $30,000 and a monetary proffer to the Kernstown Battlefield Association for $5,000. And this is the proffered generalized development plan. It shows their access point as well as the right-of-way dedications. Now, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this at their November 15th meeting and they did recommend approval. So tonight following the public hearing, staff is seeking a decision from the board on this rezoning request. I would be glad to answer any questions. Mr. John Bishop is here to answer any questions about transportation and Mr. Tim Stowe is here on behalf of the applicant.
Questions from Ms. Perkins, anyone? Supervisor Fisher?
Might be from Mr. Bishop. I noticed there's an 80-foot set, set aside for the bridge construction. Just want to see if you think that is, since we don't, I don't believe we have a design, correct?
You are correct, Mr. Fisher. We don't have a design yet. The mount was come to through discussion, not, not just with the applicant's engineer, but also the county engineer. So it's, we're fairly confident in it.
My only question was, do you feel confident and does the engineer for the applicant feel confident that 80-foot will cover what's needed for, you won't come along later and say, "Well, we need 90 feet"?
We feel pretty confident, sir.
I mean, it would be a, wouldn't be a win-win for anybody at that point. I just wanted to cover that point. Okay, thank you.
Other questions, Ms. Perkins or Mr. Bishop? Anyone? Anyone? All right, seeing none, we thank you all. Mr. Stowe, anything you'd like to add?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Tim Stowe. I'm Stowe Engineering, representing the applicant. We'll take just a few moments and highlight some of the key parts of this project. I know you've seen the application, you've seen the proffers that are proposed, and I'm sure you have a good understanding of those. We see this as work that's continuing to move forward, the comprehensive plan that the Planning Commission and this body did so much work on over the last several years. There were a lot of public outreach meetings, there were public hearings that were held by this body, and a good plan came forward. This property is one of the, one of the properties that was identified for industrial use, and we're following through with this rezoning request. We feel like builds on that and helps implement the comprehensive plan that was envisioned by this body. We knew transportation was one of the key components. Obviously, Mr. Fisher's already identified that as well. Funding for Renaissance Drive is imperative. There's two major problems out there. If you have a lot of time one afternoon, I would encourage you to go drive on Apple Valley Road, and you'll find yourself waiting at Valley Pike for quite a bit. There's a tremendous amount of congestion with traffic trying to get to Route 37 from the Winchester direction. By providing the finishing piece of funding for Renaissance Drive, we're providing an alternative, not only for those residents and industries that are out there now, but for those that are under construction and those that'll be coming forward in the future. Another problem out there is Springdale Road, and if you feel brave one day, go take a drive on Springdale Road. It's windy, it's narrow. If you meet in the opposing vehicle, you're going to be in the ditch, and going over the railroad tracks, it's kind of like going to King's Dominion. So there's a safety issue there. Completion of Renaissance Drive provides a safe, modern, efficient highway that'll help people get home safely and help our businesses function more efficiently. We saw that as very important, not only for ourselves, but for the citizens and the businesses of the county in that area. The property is real accessible, as Ms. Perkins mentioned. We see that as a huge plus for moving large volumes of freight. In addition to Renaissance Drive, we've also proposed a proffer that donates to the county 60 feet of right-of-way along Shady Elm Road, along our frontage. Now, there's 40 feet out there now, and your comprehensive plan identifies Shady Elm Road as a U4D section. That's an urban section, four-lane road that's divided. It requires 100 feet of right-of-way. So with the 60 feet we're providing, the 40 feet that's already there, you have the 100 feet. You'll never have to go to the neighbors across the street when VDOT decides to build this road to get right-of-way out of their yards. We've already taken care of it, and it's there for the benefit of the county and the citizens. Additionally, to the question that Mr. Fisher asked, along Renaissance Drive, we're dedicating an additional 20 feet of right-of-way on our property. That's about an acre of land total. In addition to that, we've also proffered an easement for slopes and grading of 80 feet, which could be up to four acres. As you can imagine, when the road level increases, goes up to cross the railroads with the bridge, the slopes go out further. I would tell you, as an engineer, just did this over on Snowden Bridge Boulevard, we're comfortable with what we've planned and have talked extensively with Mr. Bishop about that as well. We've proposed interpartial connectors to accompany the two entrances that we have proposed to access from Renaissance Drive. We've said we will not access Shady Elm Road. We're going to do it off of Renaissance Drive and use interpartial connectors to keep our traffic moving in that direction. We also think it's important to be good neighbors, so we've proffered to screen our loading docks from the neighbors, and as you look at the, as you look at the property, there's about 65 feet of drop across the property. It actually slopes down from Shady Elm Road to the railroad. So you can imagine, it's going to, it's going to reduce visibility from Shady Elm Road into the business. But we went one step further than that, and we've proposed to use a type-C zoning buffer with full screening, which includes a six-foot berm and landscaping with evergreen, deciduous, and bushes, three of them every 10 feet, three plantings every 10 feet. So that's going to have the berm, the six-feet high, as well as the, as well as the screening. We've also proffered not to put any signs on Shady Elm Road and to do our best to be a good neighbor by installing a multi-use trail along Shady Elm Road that they can use for the benefit of exercise, family activities, or being able to have employees go out at lunchtime and take a walk if they would like to do that. There were a couple of comments that came up at Planning Commission that I'll address. Some dealt with the safety of Springdale Road. I mentioned that, and I agree. There was a question of whether construction traffic would be allowed to come in that way. We can't control that. It's a state road. There are signs out there that recommend that trucks will get hung up on the railroad tracks if they try to go that way. I can't speak for truckers, but I would assume the signing would encourage them to not move in that direction, but I can't guarantee that they won't because it is a state road. Another question that came up pertained to funding for the fire and rescue. When we looked at this project, we looked at the budget that we had available to work with the county. We did what you do each year when you consider a budget. How do we get the maximum benefit for the greatest number of people with what we have to work with? And the proffer package that we put forward focused on transportation and solved those problems, which reduces response times for the county emergency services, and we felt was a great benefit to the citizens and allowed us to stretch what we're doing to the maximum benefit of the citizens of the county and that community. So that's how we got to where we are. I learned a long time ago in these presentations to be brief, be sincere, and be seated, and that was my intent. I would be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions of Mr. Stowe, anyone?
Just one.
Supervisor Dunn?
How long is your multi-use trail?
It's the full length of our frontage along Shady Elm Road, so it's about 2,500 feet.
Thank you.
3,000 feet, somewhere in that range.
Other questions, anyone? Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning this proposed rezoning? Anyone at all? Anyone? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. This is Back Creek again.
Back Creek Night, all right. Mr. Chairman, thank you, and thank the presenters for that information. I would make a motion to approve rezoning application number 4-17, Carball Business Center.
It's motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Discussion. Anyone? Seeing none, I guess we're ready. Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimously. Rezoning 04-17, Carball Business Center is approved. All right, that will bring us to public hearing, 2017 to 2022 capital improvements plan. Ms. Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you stated, this is the public hearing for the 2017-2022 capital improvement plan. I would note that the CIP, it's an advisory document that we update annually, and with each cycle, projects are either removed or added from the plan as they're completed or as priorities change. And also, this document is intended for a capital facilities planning document. It is not a request for funding allocation. Now, the 2017-2022 CIP, I would note reflects a number of formatting changes from the previously adopted plans. These changes include things like separating the tables based on funding sources, such as local, state, federal. There's some reduced text, and we've also taken a lot of the project descriptions and moved them to an appendix. Now, I would also note that the monetary amounts that are shown within the CIP tables before you tonight were compiled during the last CIP section with 2016, January 2017. So a lot of these figures are not current. They will change as we roll into the 2018-2023 CIP, which is currently underway, but it won't be approved for a number of months. Now, within this CIP before you, there's a total of 75 projects. These range from schools, parks and rec, library, county administration, fire and rescue, transportation, and the airport. As I stated, the tables have been separated before they were all on one table that had a total for all projects. We've separated into, first, general government expenditures, second is transportation, and third is airport. There's also maps included that correspond to the tables in the projects. There's an overall table. There's a potential school location table, parks and rec, and transportation. So coming to the past of where this has been, the CPPC, which is the Conference of Plans and Programs Committee, reviewed this back in March. They endorsed the CIP and affirmed that the projects are in conformance with the 2035 comprehensive plan. And then that committee forwarded to the Planning Commission for discussion. The Planning Commission discussed this in April 2017. They then had a public hearing in September and a public meeting in November. And at that meeting, the Planning Commission also affirmed the projects are in conformance with the comprehensive plan. So tonight, we are seeking a decision from the board on the adoption of the 2017-2022 comprehensive improvement plan. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Questions, Ms. Perkins, anyone?
One question.
Supervisor Dunn?
This, this plan does not include the school board CIP, is that correct?
It includes the priorities that were given to us during the 2016-2017, December, January. There's an updated priority list that will go during the next cycle, but this does include the last set.
So it doesn't, it does not include the CIP that was recently passed by the school board in November, correct?
Correct. What's included in the CIP is the last session.
Thank you.
Other questions, Ms. Perkins? Anyone? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
It's a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning the proposed CIP? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing portion. How would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Slaughter?
I would like to make a motion to approve the 2017 through 2022 capital improvement plan with an amendment to reflect Frederick County Public School Priority CIP approved at their November 9 meeting. I do realize that this is a planning document, but if this could help us with the foundation moving forward, I would like to make that motion.
I think it's okay.
Second.
And a second. Mr. Williams, you have any concern with that?
No.
Thank you, sir. Discussion. Anyone? All right, we're ready. Supervisor McCarty?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. CIP is amended and adopted. That will bring us to the Eastern Road Plan. Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have been working for some time now on an update to the Eastern Road Plan. What we are doing here mostly tonight is to incorporate VDOT line work to display Route 37 as accurately and as up-to-date as possible, and also to deal with the, a realignment of the 522 realignment. However, we do have also some cleanup issues. As of course you're well aware, the Eastern Road Plan is the cornerstone portion of the transportation section of your comprehensive plan, which is designed to address the growth and your vision for the county. As you go through your packet, pardon me, you'll see the first map is your current Eastern Road Plan with a number of red circles on it, and as we work through the presentation, those circles are the areas that we're going to focus on, beginning with Route 37. What you see on the screen to your left, you have two maps. It's the same map, but one has the aerials and one doesn't because frankly, while the lines show up okay on the iPad, they don't show up too good on the, on the display, so we wanted to have that be as clear as possible. But we begin just east of Exit 310, where proposed future Route 37 as well as future Warrior Drive intersect. Those roadways have been on your, on your plan for some time. However, the actual desired interchange, while shown as a desired interchange, has not been drawn, so we're bringing in that, those drawings from VDOT to incorporate into your planning. Excuse me. Next, we come to the intersect, interchange between Route 37, future Route 37 rather, and 522. This is in the vicinity of the Pony Heart Farm, for any who are familiar with that, that landmark. Now, this was an area where you were showing ramps. However, through VDOT's update to more current standards, they have increased the width of those ramps, as you can see on the screen. Next, we come to Route 37 and Route 50. This is where, in that northeastern quadrant, or I'm sorry, northwestern quadrant, the FBI facility is being developed. As you can see here, the termini are actually in the same place for the ramps. However, some of the curvature has been modified to better address the surrounding terrain. Next, we have Route 37 at Sensity Road. Similar situation where the termini, in terms of where the actual ramps intersect with Sensity Road, on the west side are the same, but they have been pushed a little bit further to the east, on the east side of that interchange. Next, we have Route 37 at Route 7. This is one of those areas where frankly, we still have work to do. However, we're trying to at least show the improvement that has taken place, and that work we still have to do specifically, I refer to, if I can zoom in here, you'll see that this interchange ramp intersects with existing Valley Mill Road. However, that dash blue line immediately to the left or to the, to the west, if you will, is where Valley Mill Road, per your planning, is supposed to be realigned to. So as we continue this update process, that'll be one of the next steps, is to get that ramp showing as, as intersecting with future Valley Mill Road as opposed to existing, since this one, this location would be expected to be cut off per your planning. So as the elements of your road plan come together, we would similarly look for those segments to align. The next two graphics are both focused on the interchange between Route 37 and Snowden Bridge Boulevard, which was recently completed, or a portion of, through the revenue sharing process. The one you're looking at right now is an 800-foot wide ramp spacing. For those who were on the board at the time of the Greystone rezoning, you remember that as the spacing we discussed extensively during that rezoning and around which that, that application attempted to depict a reservation area. Now, that reservation area doesn't hold this design 100%, but it probably does 90 or 95. The next alternative is the 1,200-foot wide ramp spacing. Now, VDOT has indicated to us that either one will work, but the, I guess the favorite analogy is the squeezing of a balloon. And by that, what we mean is with Snowden Bridge Boulevard itself, with an 800-foot wide ramp spacing, you're talking about a wider Snowden Bridge Boulevard section under that interchange area because you need to accommodate double left-turn lanes, whereas with the 1,200-foot wide spacing, you no longer need those double lefts. You would have a longer single lane spacing. The key thing for staff in terms of, as we try and look toward that future implementation, work with the surrounding property owners, and take advantage of the existing proffers is that this one has a much higher impact in terms of right-of-way, which is not promised or controlled. Moving on from there, you're looking at the interchange between future Route 37 and Interstate 81 just north of Exit 317. If you look at the bottom of the map, you can actually see the 317 ramps. I point that out because even with these drawings, in the future, as you get toward a real implementation of this roadway, you'll see additional improvements along 81 itself because that's a substandard interchange spacing. So you'd be talking about things such as collector-distributor lanes and that sort of thing, just to further illustrate that part of what we're trying to accomplish is to, to get the latest and greatest in front of you, but with a long-range project like this, that's an ongoing process. This is another location where you've long shown an interchange, but the ramps have not been shown on the Eastern Road Plan prior to today. And finally, as far as Route 37 goes, finally, the area where the loop around Stonewall Industrial Park ties back into existing Route 37. Once again, previously, as you can see in the red there, we were just showing the actual connection. VDOT has been working... to try and conceptualize how those ramps would end up looking in the future, and that's what you see before you. Once again, probably not a final answer, but best most up-to-date work today to aid us in working with land use applications and planning. Moving on from there, we have one of our fairly simple clarification items. Once again, we are back at the interchange, the intersection of Route 50 and future Route 37, where the FBI is already working on developing their site. And of course, to the south, southeast of there, so, excuse me, southwest, is where also Navy Federal Credit Union is doing their expansion. We're simply clarifying that the yellow is not where we wish for that road to intersect with Millwood Pike, but actually, the blue dash line to show that that actually aligns with Independence Drive. Something we've always intended, but when you zoom in on the map, was not clear. Next, we have Lenore Drive within Stonewall Industrial Park. For some years now, frankly, since, since well before I got to the county, there's been, was referred to as a slip ramp shown from the end of Lenore Drive onto Route 37 southbound. While the intention was always to allow not only that exiting traffic from Lenore onto Route 37, but the traffic from southbound Route 37 to get onto Lenore, there was some concern that that single line on the map might create confusion in the future. So what we have done is add that additional line where you see the, the tag calling out the slip ramp clarification, just to make sure that that's clear, that both movements are intended. I would note that is still not a full-blown interchange. It's a southbound Route 37 access only. Next, we get to the realignment of 522. Of course, this is another item that's long been on your planning. And if I can zoom in here, what you see in the yellow is what is currently on your plan, where you have 522 deviating from its current course to go back over toward Riko Lane. And the intersection actually goes through a landmark you may be familiar with, the Blue Fox Billiards, to show an aligned intersection with Purdue. I believe it's Purdue Drive. What the realignment does, and was, and was developed as part of VDOT's study, the entire 313 interchange area, not only does it reduce the impact on the runway protection area of the airport, as you can see right here by the purple line being a little bit further west of the yellow, but it also has a much reduced impact on developed properties by taking advantage of Prince Frederick Drive and coming down to the Prince Frederick Drive intersection with Route 50. Of course, there's still an impact on, on land we don't necessarily control, but as you can see from your aerial there, it's also land that has not been already developed. Next item is simply the addition of this blue line that intersects with the future Stevens City bypass. This is some, this is a line that was already in the Frederick County Stevens City Joint Land Use Plan, hadn't made it onto the Eastern Road Plan map, so we're just pulling that in. Tasker Road, also basically just a cleanup item. The yellow is the existing, the blue is showing where we've bumped it to, to meet the VDOT drawings. Simple as that. And then as you reach the end of your packet, assuming you accept your changes this evening, this is what your Eastern Road Plan map will look like at the end of the day. Now, we are seeking action from the Board of Supervisors on whether to incorporate these changes that have been outlined into your Comprehensive Plan. And we also are further seeking action in terms of whether you want us to use the 800-foot wide ramp spacing at Snowden Bridge Boulevard, or the 1,200-foot wide ramp spacing. The Transportation Committee, the CPPC, and the Planning Commission of all reviewed this item and recommended approval with the 800-foot wide ramp spacing. Of course, I can take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Bishop, anyone? I have one. If we can go back to the 522 realignment, East 50. Is there any reason not to continue coverstone down to the realigned?
Absolutely not, and that's actually the intention. It just didn't make it onto this.
Didn't show that way.
I agree. It's, but that's, that, that intersection is still intended.
Might help if we just show.
Yes, that'll be done.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Sir. Supervisor Dunn.
If you just can go through a little bit more elaborate on the, on the pros and cons of the 800 versus the 1,200 ramp that you described earlier.
I'm sorry. If I can get back to that. Simply put, the, the largest pro, if you will, for the 800-foot spacing is the reduced impact on the surrounding property, which is zoned and which we don't control. That's M1 zone property. The need for a wide and wider Snowden Bridge Boulevard to accommodate that narrower ramp still doesn't really have that added impact to the outside property because that wider section is under the interchange within the reservation area. The 1,200-foot goes significantly outside of the reservation area. I have not actually calculated how many acres. We had some difficulty frankly, in trying to overlay the, the reservation area. But it is significant. And while it allows you to have a narrower Snowden Bridge Boulevard, that's no real benefit to us in terms of right-of-way. The, the real hit comes from the fact that we're bumping out those ramps.
So you're pushing out, you're using up more area.
Yes, sir.
Without a benefit. And so from your perspective, the 800 concentrates the, the impact in a smaller area, which has less of a impact on the surrounding houses, et cetera. Is that accurate?
Exactly. Well, in this case, M1 zone property. And for, just from a project implementation, implementation standpoint, that right-of-way value is significant. So it, that, that would definitely bump up your actual right-of-way acquisition cost through this area.
So from a professional viewpoint, I might ask Mr. Fisher the same thing. Do you think the 800 is a better situation?
When you consider all the pros and cons, yes. I do.
Thank you.
Other questions, Mr. Bishop, anyone? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Since it's a public hearing, would anyone like to comment concerning the proposed changes to the Eastern Road Plan? Component of our Comprehensive Plan. Anyone? Anyone at all? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion. How would the Board like to handle this one? Supervisor Lofton.
I have a question. Do you want action on the 800 versus 1,200 first, and make that part of the Plan Amendment?
Yes, sir. It's, frankly, I don't think I need, from a staff perspective, two motions as long as you are clear in your adoption, whether you want the 800 or the 1,200-foot spacing at Snowden Bridge Boulevard.
Okay, so the motion would include, would say that we want the 800 as opposed to the 1,200?
If that is your desire, yes.
Context of the Plan Amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Further discussion? Anyone?
Mr. Fisher, would you like to make that motion?
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher.
I will move adoption of the Eastern Road Plan as amendment to the Frederick County 2035 Comprehensive Plan with the 800-foot.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Anyone? All right, you ready to vote? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn.
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. That will bring us to Proposed Ordinance Amendment. Mr. Klein.
Yes, good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. This is a proposed amendment to Chapter 165, the zoning ordinance, to modify the requirements for residential separation buffers in our RP Residential Performance Zoning District. Residential separation buffers are required to adequately buffer different housing types from dissimilar housing types within adjacent separate developments. The intent of this request is to provide flexibility for smaller infill-type lots, ensuring the desired housing types and densities specified in our Long Range Land Use Plan, which is a component of our 2035 Comprehensive Plan. This was an amendment that was proposed by a private land developer in the county, and staff drafted a revision to the zoning ordinance residential separation buffer matrix to modify the required buffers between single-family detached units and townhome units, and between single-family small lots, which can be attached or detached units, and townhome units. This amendment would change the required buffer category from a Category B type buffer to a Category A type buffer. For comparison, between Category A and Category B type buffers, where a full screen would be required, which would include a landscape screen and a six-foot tall fence, wow, wall, mound, or berm, a Category B type buffer requires a total separation distance of 50 feet. That includes a 30-foot section for an inactive distance buffer and a 20-foot section for an active distance buffer. By comparison, a Category A type buffer of the same screening requirements would require a total separation of only 25 feet. Thus, the distance between a A and a B effectively is cut in half, where the inactive distance portion would be 15 feet and the active distance portion would be approximately 10 feet. The Development Review and Regulations Committee discussed this amendment at length at their April, May, July, and August meetings of this year. The Development Review and Regulations Committee agreed with the proposed changes. The Planning Commission discussed this item on June the 7th, and again on September the 20th, and the Board of Supervisors discussed this item on October the 11th. The Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item on November the 1st, and they recommended approval. Following a public hearing this evening, staff is seeking a decision by the Board of Supervisors on this proposed ordinance, zoning ordinance text amendment. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have as well. Thank you.
Questions of Mr. Klein, anyone? Supervisor Lofton.
A couple of questions. When we're talking about reducing this buffer, in general, what is the buffer with the abutting uses? Is it a large buffer? Because I'm thinking reducing this buffer, if you already have a small buffer on the other side, puts those things pretty close together.
It depends on where the property is located. In some cases, the adjacent development may be an adjacent planned unit-type development where a buffer is already in place. In other situations, what we see with infill lots is you had two or three-acre parcels where there were single-family detached homes. There's no buffer between each, each parcel, and you're, you would be taking maybe one or two of those lots and putting in a more dense type of housing, where you'd have single-family homes on each side or three sides. And there, right now, there's no buffer between each unit, but with the new, with putting in a new development that has a different housing type, you'd be required to put in a buffer, whether that's a Category A or a Category B or C. It's dependent on the type of housing that you're locating on your property versus what is immediately adjacent to you.
Are there many of these? I, I'm wondering why they couldn't be worked out on an individual basis with the Board of Zoning Appeals to reduce the amount of buffer and special cases for the infill?
Well, Mr. Chair, enshrine if there's something with the Board of Zoning Appeals, but currently, the ordinance doesn't permit any kind of reduction, waiver, zoning administrator modification to the buffer requirement. So when a property owner comes in that's looking at putting in several units on a particular piece of property, we don't have the ability to make that waiver as the, is there an ordinance currently drafted? There are, we're starting to see a trend with the development community where the large tracts of property are no longer available. So what you have is they're able to acquire what is now one or two lots where there's a single-family house. They're combining those lots, and they're trying to put in additional homes, duplexes, townhomes. I think that's, that's kind of the trend that we're seeing. You know, we just don't have those big, large tracts of property anymore. So they're being constrained by the size of the lots that they're able to create with also trying to provide a housing type there. Thank you.
Other questions of Mr. Klein, anyone? Supervisor Fisher.
I'm just trying to picture this. I've had a little trouble with this one when it came to us for discussion. But basically, you could end up with a three-story townhouse with, within 25, a 25-foot buffer within single-family dwelling, if I'm reading this correctly.
Effectively, yes. I will, the, the app, the developer that proposed the ordinance can speak specifically to the case that he brought forward as the example for requesting this amendment, but effectively, that would be the case. There is nothing that would preclude them from doing a multi-story townhouse as opposed to requiring it to be a two-story, so it's more compatible. It would effectively, you know, take that, shrink that distance from 50 feet if they're providing the full landscape screen to 25 feet.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sure, we'll come back to you. Since it's a public hearing, would anyone like to comment concerning these proposed changes to the zoning ordinance? Yes, sir. If you would, your name, Magisterial District, and try to limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Good evening. My name is Chairman Chudry. I'm with Greenway Engineering. Here this evening to discuss the zoning district buffer. Mr. Fisher, to address your concern and the question that you had, you could end up with a 25-foot unit adjacent to a two-story unit. By allowing this buffer on one particular development, you would be allowing a two-story unit adjacent to a two-story, uh, single-family development by just allowing four extra feet. So the distance and buffer allows some flexibility for these infill lots. One of the other things, and not to revisit the first meeting, the first thing on the agenda this evening, but what I kind of heard and resonated to me, and I've been in the, working in the county for 20 years, is the, the sprawl in the rural community. And, you know, you can take these rural agricultural areas and go to five and two-acre lots with them. The urban development area runs, traverses through everyone's district here, and outside of that is all your rural land. So we have a, only a finite acreage of land that has our, our roads, our facilities. And to best utilize that land is, you know, smart growth, smart planning. And, and one, one of my particular cases is to build a, a two-story townhouse community within a two-story, single-family and two-story townhouse community. That's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
We don't usually do that.
Okay.
We'll ask you if we come up with something.
All right. Thank you so much for your time.
Anyone else like to comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Patrick Sowers, Peckham District. I was also one of the, the original applicants back in, I believe, February, March, when this first started, when it went to the subcommittee level. And kind of the, the point I want to start with is, I use the term right sizing the buffers at the Planning Commission stage. And, and what I mean by that is, the purpose of the buffer really is to, to buffer different uses from one another. We've got residential separation buffers, you've got zoning district buffers. And I like using that as an example, because if you have a single-family home and you have a piece of B2 property adjacent to it, and you want to build, say, a, a movie theater, you got to provide a Category B buffer, and that's a 50-foot buffer. So if you think of the intensity of uses between a movie theater and a single-family home, and then you step back and you look at a townhome and a single-family home, to think that those uses are equally incompatible, that, that a townhome is as incompatible as a movie theater from a single-family home, yet the way the ordinance is written currently, it requires the same distance buffer from those two uses. And the other issue we've run into is the example of what is on the other property. I'm, I'm dealing with a property currently where the adjoining property has duplex units with an existing platted 100-foot deep buffer. Yet, the way the ordinance is written, it doesn't matter what's on the other side of the property line, we still would be required to provide a 50-foot buffer on our side of the property line in order to construct townhomes. So you end up with this 150-foot wide buffer within the UDA, where we're trying to focus growth per the Comprehensive Plan, and it just seems like a, a waste of space really within the UDA. And from a density standpoint, the, the change in the buffer distance itself isn't what going to modify density for these projects. Density is really dictated by stormwater management, particularly under the, the new regulations, your parking, access, existing photography, grading. All that is really what impacts density. So this proposal is really just to provide a little bit of additional flexibility for design design community to essentially hit the same densities that we're hitting on other projects in the county, but to allow that to happen on an infill-type project. So with that, we've been through multiple meetings at the subcommittee level and at the planning commission. We did receive a recommendation of approval from the planning commission, so I hope the board would support this tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to comment? Anyone at all? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing process. Board, any questions of staff? Supervisor Fisher.
Mr. Klein, one more time. We could have single-family dwellings and end up with a townhouse within 25 feet is the way this is currently being proposed.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
I hear what everybody's saying, and the increased density, from what I recently found out on a particular piece of property, the increase is 25%. So this one troubles me, and yet I understand the need for it as far as probably preserving the rural areas and trying to increase its density. And I just, again, history comes back and bites me, because on Tasker Road, when we built those townhouses right up behind those single-family dwellings, that was a very difficult situation for those folks. Has this thing been researched enough that it's not going to have a bunch of loopholes in it? To me, a three-story townhouse right up to a single-family dwelling 25 feet is not acceptable. And yet, with the scenario that the gentleman from Greenway, that's probably okay.
Speaking to the research, we looked extensively at how other localities treat this request. Some of them have what Patrick described as a right-size, right kind of fit sliding scale, depending on the type of development. The best example would be Loudoun County. But there is, as far as loopholes go, there is nothing in our ordinance that would preclude someone putting a three-story townhome versus a two-story townhome on 25 feet from the line. Obviously, there are setbacks, there are other requirements, parking grading, as stated. But in its simplest terms, to answer your question, there's no, there's no, nothing preventing a three-story townhome from being put into place, in place of a two-story townhome.
And we have some of these infill lots that this really, they're hamstrung, so to speak, with what can be done there that currently exist.
You're correct that currently are. That doesn't mean there's no, there's no use of the land. It just means the desired use of the land, the desired housing type, the desired density may not otherwise be realized because of the configurations of the lot.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Dunn. Just to follow up on what Mr. Fisher said and asked, the original intent on the 50 feet versus the 25 feet was to provide some spacing in certain types of housing. And so when people built houses, they understood that was the parameters to build, correct?
Correct.
And so when you build under those parameters, what I'm hearing, and I also have some difficulty with this, is that there may be some what's called infill spots, but that's still open space. And the people that bought homes in there knew that there was going to be certain spacing between buildings. And what I'm hearing, the difficulty I'm having, is that you're then going to close some of that spacing out. It's going to become more dense. I understand it's trying to provide flexibility to builders, but I just have a problem with people that already live in an area in which we have some zoning that says, this is what it is. And if that doesn't work, then maybe that area's been built out. And if it's been built out, it's been built out, as opposed to trying to cut the number to then make it even more dense. That's the problem I'm having with it. I just wanted to clarify, that's inaccurate what I'm saying here.
I understand your comment, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And any of the three who've commented should probably answer this question. Is there, is there any reverse effect in this that a contractor or a developer is going to build a three-story townhouse under the current situation, and this may actually allow them to lower that to a two-story townhouse in order to bring something even sort of more in compliance with, or more congruent with what's around that? I mean, is that also a possibility?
I believe in Mr. Tweedy's case, his intent is to build a two-story townhome, but the zoning ordinance precludes, the way it would configure his lot, he'd be precluded from doing that. I'll let him speak to that. But you are correct in your assumption, yes.
So the current scheme wouldn't preclude him from building the three-story. This would allow it to actually become a two-story versus three.
Correct. Or he could continue to build a three-story.
Yes, that's sufficient. Thank you.
So I guess just a comment on my part. Are there other questions for Mr. Klein? Anyone? Yes, sir. Supervisor Dunn.
Just on what Mr. McCarthy said, we talked about this earlier. I don't see the difference between, I don't see the difference between the footprint for a two-story building and a footprint for the three-story building. That's where I'm missing something. If one of the other gentlemen wants to, you know, comment or address that, or if you'd like to address that, but I don't, what am I missing?
I'll let the, okay, I'll let the development community speak to that specific question.
We'll allow that.
Once again, Chairman Tweedy with Greenway Engineering. For example, the two-story units, typical townhouse width, 20 feet wide, you go, you know, 44, 45 feet deep to allow a garage unit and livable space and kitchen and spacious downstairs. Your three bedrooms are upstairs, and that's single-family attached townhouse unit. Three-story units, you have to go 20 feet wide, maybe not as deep, maybe you're 34, 38 feet, and you, that is a garage and a basement, and then your livable floor and your bedrooms are on the third floor.
The question, I won't belabor, I'm just, the question I'm having to deal with is, if you pour the concrete, if you pour the concrete for a two-story building, and a third story is a third story, how does the footprint change? That's what I'm...
The width and depth of the home changes.
It changes because it's a three-story versus two-story?
Because of the square footage that you are trying to achieve within the townhouse. The one project that you're, that we were speaking of, I have 17 units, five of them are three-story, the rest are two-story. I desire to put them all two-story.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could, just to maybe help, to obtain the same living space in a smaller footprint, you have to go up and do the third floor. That's the difference. You're putting the same square footage essentially on three floors. If you do it on two, it takes up more space. If you shrink it down, the only place to go is up.
So I guess my only comment would be that the worst potential conflicts tend to be on much older infill lots that are surrounded by much older developments, where we didn't have setbacks, or our setbacks were very minimal. And some of those are built very close to property lines. Since then, we've learned a lot, we've developed ordinance, we've improved the aesthetics of our community. And some kind of compromise probably is called for here. I don't have an objection particularly to what staff has brought to us, but there is always going to be potential, when you infill any property with any use, for there to be less than ideal situations. And I'm not sure how you deal with that other than a case-by-case basis. You really need ordinance to guide the multitude of what we do and have to deal with. The community should be able to depend on what they can and can't do when they make purchase decisions. CUP adds a whole nother level of complexity and time involved. I'm not sure that, I personally don't have an issue with trying this and if it doesn't work out, you know, amending it again. That's, the real question is, what do we think?
Mr. Chairman, I struggled with this the last time. Had some time to look back at it and reconsider, and I feel kind of like you do, that I think we need to move ahead, take a chance. We can always come back and change things. There's not a lot of areas in Frederick County where this is going to play a role. There is a limited amount. But in those limited amounts, from talking to developers and contractors, I feel like they can minimize the visual effect, Blaine, I think is what you're looking at, the footprint effect. If you allow them to do this, it brings it down. Instead of having a three-story townhouse, you can, on that same piece, you can come out, get the square footage, make the dollars work, and have a two-story townhouse unit with a smaller buffer. It's not as obtrusive to the neighborhood, if you will.
And Mr. Wells, I mean, the struggle I have with that is just that, in Redbud, for example...
Right.
It's a concentrated area, it's designed to be concentrated. My concern, which I'm just struggling with, is it just adds another house, it adds another house. It increases the density for what's already, that's my struggle, that's all.
I understand.
Further discussion, anyone? So how would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that the board accept the change to the, make the ordinance amendment as presented by the planning commission.
So we have a motion to adopt the changes to Chapter 165. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Is there further discussion? Anyone? Supervisor Slaughter?
No.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Nay.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. That, I think, brings us to board liaison reports. Are there any? Anyone? Brings us to a citizen comment period on any subject that you might like to bring to the board. Would anyone like to speak? Anyone at all? Last chance. All right, we'll close the citizen comment period. Board of supervisors' comments. May I?
Mr.
May I?
May I.
Please?
Yes, sir.
Have two things I'd like to do. One is welcome Supervisor McCarthy. Real pleased to have you with us. Look forward to serving with you. The other is, it's time for us to say goodbye to a very long and dedicated career here of Supervisor Fisher. He served with great dedication. He's been a great and thoughtful supervisor. The citizens have been very well-served, and it's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you. We're certainly going to miss you.
Thank you.
And I'm sure your colleagues have other things they'd like to share, so.
They can repeat in public?
I don't think it'll be that tough for you. You're a big guy, you can take it. Anyone else? Go ahead, Supervisor Lofton.
Mr. Chairman, I would certainly echo your thoughts here. Welcome, Mr. McCarthy. Look forward to working with you on the board. Mr. Fisher, I hate to say this is goodbye, because I certainly hope it's not goodbye. I hope we see you a lot in the future, but I know I, for one, and others that I've talked to, have certainly given you many kudos for your service to the community, your involvement in the community, and your ability to listen, care, understand, and make decisions in the best interest of the citizens. And I think, again, the Shawnee District has been very well-served by your service, and wish you all the best in your future. And again, I hope you're not a stranger, okay?
I feel the same way. Gene, you mentored me when I came on the Public Works. I was just a citizen member at that time, and I've been on there a long time with you. It's been a pleasure working with you on there. And when I came on the board, you were, you and Gary and the rest of the guys really came to me and said, if you need any help or you need to mentor, you were open to that. And I've learned a lot, and I appreciate the things you've done for me, everything you've done for Frederick County.
Thank you.
You've done it with goodness in your heart, and with Frederick County being what you're looking forward to. It's never been a thing for Gene Fisher. It's always what's best for Frederick County, and that's what this board should be about. And you've set a great example. And I hope that you will consider being on some committees as a citizen member in the future. You would be great at it. I appreciate it. Thanks, Gene. We'll miss you on the board, but I know you won't be a stranger.
Thanks, Bob.
Mr. Fisher?
I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. I recognize Ms. Slaughter.
Sorry.
I would just like to echo all of the comments that have been made, but I think having come on this board, you've always availed yourself for many questions. I've certainly appreciated all your wisdom and counsel, particularly on planning issues, transportation issues, and we've met with various constituents together, and I just appreciate all your help and guidance, and you will be sadly, sadly missed, so I wish you well.
Thank you.
Supervisor Dunn?
I could say, "Ivid." Mr. Fisher, I just appreciate your listening. I appreciate your return phone calls. I appreciate your insights when I've asked you questions, pro or con. I appreciate the work you've done in the airport. I appreciate your engineering degree and that expertise. I think as these other gentlemen have said, and ladies, you're going to be missed. So, I mean, I just appreciate your trying to help me. When I was here, I appreciate your insight. I really, really do appreciate that more than anything else, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy?
First, thank you all for the welcome, and a special thanks to the county staff. You guys are really amazing, especially bringing us up to speed. It's quite a learning curve, but you've made it very easy for me. So I truly appreciate that, and all the help of the supervisors here who've helped me get a running start. Supervisor Fisher, I've worked with you now for two and a half hours, and it's been...
You're lucky.
It's been edifying, but I've watched you from the other side of this bench, and you should be very proud. Your family, I know, is proud, and your community is very proud of all the work that you've done for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Lofton?
One more thing. I think, like I said, we've all appreciated Mr. Fisher's service here, but I think sometimes we forget to recognize the real power behind the people sitting up here on this bench. And as you, as we all know, it takes time. It takes time away from your family, takes time away from your wife, and that's hard sometimes for those who are not serving here, but to help those who are serving here behind the scenes. And so I think we owe a big round of applause to Mrs. Betsy Fisher for all her support of Supervisor Fisher all these years, all the time that she has spent alone, and he's been at meetings and take care of things when he can't be there. Mrs. Fisher, thank you very much.
Supervisor Fisher?
It's getting deep in here, you know?
You're going to.
Well, before I make my last motion...
I understand.
It's been a privilege to serve the citizens of the Shawnee District and Frederick County. It's a privilege and it's humbling at the same time. And a thank you to staff just seems totally inappropriate. You know, sometimes I feel like Jay's been herding cats, trying to round us all up and get us where we belong over the years, and, but staff has been great, you know, all the committees I've served on, staff has always been very supportive, answered questions, done the research. I really appreciate that. And the other thing that I want to relate to the citizens of the county is this board and previous board members. And you all don't see it, and believe me, our community, our nation, our state needs what this board has. It may look like we agree on everything all the time, but let me tell you, we don't. But we're able to disagree and agree to disagree and still have respect for each other. We laugh, we get along. Gary, want to talk about red light cameras? We could, you know? The fact that we disagree is not a big deal to us. We respect each other's opinion. And I just can't explain to everyone enough how I appreciate what these board members and past board members have meant, the respect we've shown each other, and the ability to work together. It's just, it's amazing. It's a lesson I wish Washington, D.C. could follow. So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I thank all of you, but I will make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
There is a second.
Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those no? Thank you, sir. We'll stand adjourned. You know, we're going to ask you to come back so we can pick on you. All right, we were depending on... All right, we were defending all of you.